Radio Free Santa Clarita presents. The Talk of Santa Clarita. A podcast about issues involving Santa Clarita and the surrounding valley. With your host, Stephen Daniels. Episode 155, Candidate for the Santa Clarita City Council, Tim Ben Boydston. And now, let's see what the talk of Santa Clarita is.
And remember, this is for posterity, so be honest.
The legendary Tim Ben Boydston.
A legend in my own mind, and nobody else's, believe me.
Well, let me ask you this, first off, how are things with the Canyon Theater Guild right now?
Canyon Theater Guild is closed.
Well, I knew that part, but I mean, like, how are you, what's the status of it?
Well, the status is this, we've been, we're celebrating our 50th year of Great Life Theater. And we have no intention of going anywhere.
Okay, great.
We have been closed for six months, and actually, our revenues have dropped over 90%.
Jesus.
That being said, we were able to get the PPP loan. And that was great, because that carried us two months. But it's been another four since then. And fortunately, over the years, I've really been a conservative manager, as far as the Guild. And I've always made sure that there was a really good cash reserve, at least 20% of our operating budget in cash reserves. And at this time, right before COVID, the economy was really good for two years. So, we had a lot of, a lot of people that came out and enjoyed live theater the last couple of years, until the COVID, so we actually had even a little bit more cash in the bank. So, we're fortunate in the fact that we have cash reserves. And that we are able to cut our expenses a lot. Although, our negative cash flow probably runs 15,000 to 20,000 a month, right now.
On what, though? I mean, if you're not actually...
Oh, well, we have three employees.
Okay.
Okay, there's myself, and two other employees. Everyone else, of course, has been laid off, or we're not using them, because they're instructors. And we have my Director of Operations Administration. And we have our box office manager.
Right.
And so, between the three of us, and by the way, we're all on a 20% pay reduction. But we're trying to maintain staff. Both of the employees that I have, and doing an excellent job, are teaching online classes that actually start tomorrow. And they have increased the types of classes that we have, so it's really terrific that they're able to do that. And that we have a good number of people that are taking the online classes. However, that, of course, you know, still doesn't bring 10% of our revenues in, from what we're used to.
Well, is, I mean...
And you have costs, we have a building. And people don't realize how much insurance, and even utilities, even though you're closed. Because we have onsite management office, and even though we're not using the big theater, we, there's electricity that we use.
Right.
And it's all at rates that are unfortunately unfair, because they're based on what it was before COVID, when we had that kind of demand, they're called demand rates. So, there's a lot of little things people don't know that cost. And the fees, the government didn't change their fees and say, "Oh, never mind." The bank didn't say, "Oh, never mind, don't pay us." You know, all those things add up to about 10,000 a month.
Jeez.
Okay, and then labor, you know?
Yeah, well, how are you gonna survive? I mean, they don't think COVID, I mean, Dr. Fauci was saying that he didn't expect until the end of 2021, to where things might be back to normal. I mean, what, do you have a plan to keep the Theater Guild going during that time?
You know, we, we're always looking for ways to try to bring in revenues. And one of the things that we have tried to do, it was to try to bring in revenues for fundraising. So, right now, we have a request in through the county, through Catherine Barger's office, who is gonna look into it for us, so that we can try to do a fundraiser, that's an outside fundraiser, distance and everything, similar to you have outdoor dining. So, that's one thing that we're trying to do. Obviously, we are trying to use our space for something else. And you know that the movie industry has been able to open up. So, for small pieces, small bits and pieces, we can use the stage as a production stage. So, we have one, we have our first, very exciting, our first small production that's gonna go in and film on the stage with a tiny crew, all distance, and all the things that they have to do. But it's those sort of things that we're trying to do. But really, quite honestly, that's not a very big number.
Yeah.
So, you know, I know Dr. Fauci is very cautious, and in his position, where the whole country's looking up to the guy. I understand that. My personal opinion is it will not take that long.
Yeah.
Because I think that the...
I didn't know you were a doctor.
Not a doctor, but interestingly enough, I play one onstage.
Okay.
No, no, I'm just kidding. I have played a doctor onstage before, a crazy mad doctor, but that, that's not here. I actually have a two-year degree in medical technology.
I gotcha.
Yeah, and so, this is a science degree. So, I'm not going to pretend I'm Dr. Fauci, I certainly don't have that level of education. However, I do know a bit about diseases, communicable diseases, and, and a lot of things about how diseases kill you, and viruses and things. And so, interestingly enough, having that background, kind of puts you in a different frame of mind, a different space, I guess, in your head, because you begin to look at things scientifically. Okay, and you really want to dig in and find out what the science says. And I, I think that the more people that get the COVID, as you know, it doesn't affect some people at all when they get it, and some people, it's very mild, it's like a little flu, some people never know they have it. So, what's happening now, the schools are opening up, their college kids are going back, you know, and they're all going back to school, and they're all giving it to each other, and they're dying, okay? And so, what's happening is, if you watch the numbers, you'll see that the mortality rate, as far as the total number of cases that are confirmed, keeps dropping. And it will continue to drop. Because the mortality rate for COVID, as you know, probably heard the CDC came out the other day and said, "The mortality rate for COVID only, 6%." And a lot of those people are elderly, and the average age of death is about 80. So, the issue is, you say, "Well, how can you say that?" Well, every death's a tragedy, okay?
Right.
But just because you could die in a car accident, thousands, tens of thousands of people die in car accidents every year, you, you gotta say, "Whoa, whoa."
Tim, Ben.
Oh, no, no. So, wait a minute, wait a minute, let me, let me finish.
Okay.
How many, see, how many people die of all causes in the United States in a year?
Oh, I have no idea.
Yeah, and most people don't, okay? About 2.6 million people die, 2,600,000 people die every year. Okay, that's, that's the death rate. So, but when you're talking about the death rate for COVID only, you're talking about 12,000, 11,000 to 12,000, 6%. That's about the same number of people that kill themselves every year, which is a tragedy. But you don't see it on the news every night. And so, I'm not trying to downplay this. If you have underlying conditions, or you're a certain age, you better take this serious. And if you're in a family that has that, you better take it serious, you better mask up the way I do.
Yeah.
Okay, you better keep your six feet, and you better not go in contact with people that are in that high-risk category, don't do it. Okay, but I'm going out to dinner and sitting outside, because I think that's safe.
Uh, okay.
Okay, some people have, they have to make their own choice, Stephen, they gotta make their own choice. But you cannot be driven by fear. Be, have your, have your things that are dictated that you do based on science. That's the thing, base it on science. Okay, so...
Well, I don't wanna get on a big tangent on this.
Oh, well, okay, see, but it is, but I think it's important that people know, it's a big subject right now. And people are very much about, oh, you know, and I understand that, okay? And you better be dead serious about it, if you are or in contact with people that are high-risk.
Right.
Okay, that's just, that's, that's, that's like you mask up and put on your booties back before COVID. When you go and somewhere with a compromised immune system with cancer, you take the precautions. So, you don't wanna go there, okay?
Okay.
But this is, the point is, is that everyone's make their decisions, and some people are making their decisions, they don't, they don't have the same choice.
Yeah.
And that's, think of those people, those are the people that are providing our foods, those are the people that are out in the fields picking our food. Okay, you, you, those are there, and people taking that for granted, and people taking that for granted, and then they're sitting behind their computer, or, in the case of some people, where they're sitting at home, getting paid the same thing, but honestly, not working quite as hard. Let me tell you something, those people that are risking their lives out there, okay? Those people look at that shaking their heads. And, but those are not the people mostly that they're interviewing on television. So, I want people to put it in perspective, take it seriously, make their own decisions. But you gotta make your own decision.
All right. Well, I was, I was, I really kinda wanted to worry about the fundraisers.
Well, you know, we get off on a tangent.
Yeah.
And everybody is, let's face it, COVID's what concerns more people. It's the number-one thing in Santa Clarita that people are concerned about.
Sure.
And they should be. And, but, but one of the reasons they're concerned about it is, we talk about it day and night, and on the news every night, and they got that tote board of the number, you know, that, that is... In retrospect, people are gonna find out the big difference between this COVID, which might end up having a mortality rate of overall, for the people that get it in a very small percentage, as opposed to something that's serious, which I was afraid of when I first heard about this in China, which would be something like Ebola, with a 50% mortality, I mean, 50% of the people get it die, somewhere between 20% and 75%, depending on the outbreak. That is, we're talking, that's something very, very different.
Why are you running again?
I'm running again because everything that's going on right now leads me to believe that it would be good to have somebody that has been on the council, has a steady hand, that's not crazy, that's not out here on one end of the spectrum, or out there on the other end of the spectrum, but that looks at everything in a very rational way, makes those decisions, okay? And then takes a decision that's based on that. That's why I'm running. I, I, I'm really kind of unhappy. You know, the last time we talked, a couple of years ago, before prior election, there was a lot of concern about division. That division is nothing compared to the division we have now.
Yeah.
It's nothing. I mean, the country's tearing itself apart.
That comes up a lot, you know, believe it or not, with the city council candidates, about saying that the city is divided right now. Do you, you think the city is divided as well?
What do you mean, the city, you mean the people in that city?
Well, I don't know, I mean, that's what was gonna be my question to you, do you see divisiveness in the city itself?
Here's, here's what I see in the population.
Okay.
It's Santa Clarita, everywhere, but Santa Clarita as well. I see a division that's on Facebook, okay? I see a division of people that are out there politically, trying to be the people in charge. There's nothing new with that.
Yeah.
Everybody, all through history of democracy, have always wanted to be the people in charge. I just see that, unfortunately, a lot of things are being used from a standpoint that everyone's going to be a warrior. Well, not everyone, everyone who really wants to jump in and make a loud noise is gonna be a warrior out there on social media.
Yeah.
And I see that division as horrible, people are like, "Defriending, never, we can't talk to you, you're a horrible person, oh, I know you were good friends a month ago, but now I found out you're from a different political party, so I know what I want anything to do with you." There is that.
There is, yeah.
I don't think that's the case in the general population in Santa Clarita. I know there's great numbers of people in Santa Clarita, that they wanna go to work, they wanna get their kids in a great school, they want their kids to grow up and be successful. Those are the things that I see, and I think that's the majority of the population here. Because the majority of the population of Santa Clarita is an educated population.
Yeah.
Okay, it is a diverse population, although economically, not as diverse as other areas of the country or other cities, certainly not.
Yeah.
But it's kind of that metric, like the path to get into Santa Clarita is at a certain level. And generally speaking, those people are educated, and they're people that take a deep breath and stick back and say, "Hey, well, this is not the end of the world."
Yeah.
But, yes, there is division, okay? But the division, I don't think, is most of the people. I think most of the people that are going about their lives and trying to do the best thing, they don't have time for it, okay? The COVID has not been good, because people have a lot more time to be on that magic box.
Yeah.
The little one, or the big one on your desk, or the one that sits on your lap. And what is that filled with? That's filled with division. Why is it filled with division? Because the loudest people make the biggest statements, make the biggest mess, and the media on both sides goes ahead to whip it up. Why? Because clicks sell money. Because your eyeballs sell money when they wanna sell you something, it's that simple. And so, you have everybody, instead of you, you know, it's hard to find straight news anymore. It really is, you gotta search it out. Myself, I have to watch like four channels.
Yeah.
I watch four channels on different ends of the spectrum, watch a little bit of each, kind of get a sense of where the story should be.
Right.
But it's true, this because that sells. You know, how the old saying, when television news was, "If it bleeds, it leads."
Right.
And that has not changed. The money is there, and that's why all of the media companies and everything pushing this. Because they got a viewership, and they know their viewership, and they have computer algorithms to make sure that if you think something, they try to track you and feed you that. And they feed you the top of the top, and they're not feeding you anything else. That creates division, and so, in that sense, the COVID is a problem, because everybody's spending so much more time on the screen. I mean, that is, and it's interesting, and for those of us with a political bent, it's very interesting. But unfortunately, that kind of political division has become a kind of entertainment. And that might be fun for the moment.
Yeah.
It ain't fun, it ain't good for the country.
Well, let's see, I, I hope it stays entertainment, because otherwise, it's the death of the show, so...
Well, the death, yeah, but talk, but see, you're, you know, I don't think the talk of Santa Clarita is selling a lot of advertising.
No, this is completely nonprofit, completely, totally a community service.
That's why this is such a great show, because
Well, thank you.
we can talk about that, and we can talk about, but the money is not in it. Stephen, you would be much better if you could just, if I say something you disagree with, immediately shoot back something that's incendiary.
I don't agree with that.
But you see, that's what people, but that's how people sell the stuff.
Right, right.
It doesn't do them any good, and we, you look at any major news media, the front story, best thing they can do is somebody dying, a building burning, all that's the best, okay?
Yeah.
Less than that, I mean, people don't, they're not gonna watch.
It's interesting, I've had a couple of people on my show since the last time we talked. And we, we, we talked the last time we, the last podcast we did, we talked a little bit about you being a bit of the rebel as a city councilperson, even though I, I know your defense was that the majority of the votes you agreed with. But I had Frank Ferry on. Frank did not have anything nice to say about you. I don't know if you saw the podcast or not, but you, well, first off, let's, let's talk a little bit about your rebelliousness, I guess, I think of a better way to describe it.
I prefer to think of it as independence.
Independence, okay.
Yeah, I, I am a very independent-thinking person. And I also like analyze stuff, sometimes I get right down in the weeds, which is great, I think, to make a policy decision, or great when you, if you're deciding you need to spend 10 million here or 20 million there, that's, I think, a good thing to do. I think you really should know what you're talking about, and not just the overview of the staff or developer or something like that. You need to read it carefully, so that you know that these people are saying the right thing.
Right.
And doing the right thing, and for all the right motivations and reasons, and will it be good for the city?
Right.
Because of that, I'm seen as independent, because sometimes, it seems to be something that's just a done deal, as it were, and air quotes, for those who might not be watching video.
They might be listening.
But the done-deal thing, many times, is a done-deal, it shouldn't be. And so, I'm an independent voice, and that means I would sometimes stand up and go 4-1 on the council. Now, I'll put that in perspective. Of all the votes, of all the issues, of all the times, over 95% I would be with the council. That's, that's huge.
Yeah.
You talk about people, so you're a total yes-man, you only disagreed with them 4%, 5%? Well, not true, okay? That I'm a yes-man, and it's not true that I'm also a rebel. It's just I'm, it's just I'm independent, and on some issues, some very high-profile issues, I would say no.
Yeah, the billboards being one of the great challenges.
Yeah, the digital billboards was a big thing, and the digital billboards was an issue that, when I was finally told, after asking for a long time, what's going on with these billboards, they said, "Hey, we have a great solution to the billboards, we're gonna put up some digital billboards." So, I said, "Those big, bright ones, where are you gonna put those?" And, and it turns out, they were gonna put some of them in open space.
Yeah.
In places where they would not be appropriate, in my opinion, in the opinion of most people in Santa Clarita. And so, the digital billboards, they're great, they're great in Times Square, they're great in Vegas, they're, they're okay in other places, and even okay in some place in the Santa Clarita Valley, maybe, and along Interstate 5, where the commercial is. But not in the housing residential area and stuff like, this is not Santa Clarita, at least, that's not why most people moved here. So, when I looked at that, I said, "That's not right, can we move these?" And they're pretty much, "No, you can't move them, this is the deal."
Let me ask you about...
So, I said, so I fought against it. And then, after I fought against it, since the council came back and said, "Well, too bad, we're voting for them anyway." And then, all the people that were opposed to it, and the billboard companies that they didn't give a chance to come in and bid for it, and that was the other thing, that really made me unhappy, because I'm a capitalist. And I know you always get the best deal from private industry, when you have people competing. Well, guess what? The billboard companies, the ones that were in our town, that had billboards already along the railroad tracks, they had no opportunity. They didn't get to sit down and have a bidding war, and say, "Okay, what would you give up if there were, if you got to do an electronic billboard?" No, it was an out-of-state company, it was an inside deal, there were lobbyists involved, it was a mess, okay? And no moving the boards. So, when that took place, all of us got together, and of course, we put on the ballot. And of course, it was defeated, soundly defeated, because most of the people in Santa Clarita didn't want it.
Yeah.
So, that's what I'm saying, this is, that's not, that's a lot of information, but a lot of people probably don't know the detail, or why that is, that's why.
Well, I, you know, I mean, and that's when I first came to know you, during the digital billboard thing. And I was impressed by the fact that you stood up against the rest of the city council. However, having talked to Frank Ferry, and, and let me tell you, Frank's reputation had me nervous about sitting down with him. You know, I've seen him yell at people, you know, and everything like that, but he was very nice when I, when I met with him. He insisted, and I, this is not out of, I mean, he says it on the podcast, so I'm not talking out of turn here. But that, that you refused to work with him on anything, that you just said, "I'm not gonna work with you on any project at all," and that you did not want to work with him, you refused to work with him. Is that, is that the case, or do you see it that way, or is he wrong, or?
He said, are you saying that, he actually said
Yes, it's on the podcast.
that I told him I wouldn't work with him on anything?
Yes.
That'd be a flat-out lie, and I'm sorry that Frank did that, because Frank, I think, is a good guy.
Okay.
I think all of us have our issues.
Yeah.
Okay, and I think that during that period of time, there were a lot of issues.
Yeah.
Okay, and I know he was unhappy for a lot of times, and under a lot of stress for reasons I don't know, because I'm, I don't know people's personal lives. But I'll tell you something, I have never said that with any councilperson, or to any councilperson, ever. Because you're five people to be working together. Now, as you know, the Brown Act does not allow you to go around like you can at like the state level or federal level, and you can go to anybody you want. I go, "Stephen, if you're a fellow legislator, I can go and talk to you, I can go talk to the other guy, both sides of the aisle, you can do that." But here, California, at city council level, you are forbidden from going to more than one other councilperson on any issue, okay? So, it's not like the council gets to go back and forth with each other, they don't. The only place they get to go back and forth is on the dais, okay? And when you get to that point in time, a lot of times, the issue is settled before it ever gets there.
Yeah.
Okay, and sometimes that's good, and sometimes it ain't good.
Right.
Because, you know, the city manager, his job is to kind of go around and find out what everybody wants. He is the only person, and that's why the city manager is the most powerful person in the city.
Yeah.
Because he gets to go to all five council, feel them out, kind of count the votes up, and then, and then look at it and see what they want, and then go to staff, and have staff give him their input professionally, and then go to staff and say, "Well, this is what the council wants, so let's recommend this." It's very seldom, you can always, there's a little inside baseball for you, for those who wanna get wonky.
Yeah.
If you go to city council, and you see something that says, "Staff recommends this," you can be certain that, no, the council didn't necessarily get together with one another. And all the time I was on, I never saw violations of the Brown Act, certain, never overt ones, at least not where I was involved. So, I never, I never saw that or heard about that, so if it's happening, people are awfully quiet about it. I don't think it happens, or doesn't happen much, because everybody knows those rules. However, if it says, "Recommended by staff," that means the city manager went around and took the temperature of the various people, or the council have gotten up in prior and made their feelings known. But generally, it's you talk to the city manager, and you tell him X, Y, Z. So, that's, that's what works, that's, that's how it works.
Uh, well, I'm sorry if I've created tension between you and Frank.
No, 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 listen, I, I love Frank, okay? And I hold no ill will for Frank. I think Frank, I think Frank did great service on many things.
That was gonna be my next question.
Yeah, for, when he worked, when he was at the, on the city council, especially in the early years, when he was on the city council. After you've been there a while, you know, things get, sometimes people get complacent, sometimes they go in a different direction.
Do you think that the city council, right now, they've, they've been there too long?
I think some of them have been there too long.
Who?
Obviously, well...
You gotta say.
Just see the number of years that they've been there, and then you add those up altogether.
Yeah.
Okay, if you've been on the city council for 20 years, you've been there too long.
Yeah.
All right, so, but if you are just there recently, or, you know, you were there before and you came back, that would be Cameron, the mayor.
Yeah.
I think that, not necessarily, okay? I think that's, that it's the freshness of, of being there, it's not having, you know, a set group of people all around you that say X, Y, Z. So, yeah, I, I, I think right now, it's in a period of transition, kind of like in a way of thinking.
Yeah.
So...
The, well, I mean, there has been a lot of things happening during the COVID thing in this city that is kind of, goes back to the idea of division and things like that. For example, the Black Lives Matter protests versus the Open the City Up protests, where nobody wants to wear a mask, apparently. I'm curious what your thoughts are on, on both those protests and, and the people involved. I mean, do you, what is your thoughts on Black Lives Matter? What do you think about the people that wanna protest and open up the city again?
Which one do you wanna start with? And how much time do we have?
I'll give you 15 seconds on each.
Oh, no, we're not, no, no, not answering.
30, 30 seconds on Black Lives Matter.
Ah, 30 seconds, that's not enough time.
All right.
But I will be happy to answer the question, but let me take a few moments, because they're really important.
Okay.
It's really important, not just, it's not just important here in Santa Clarita, it is important in Santa Clarita, but it's important across the nation, okay? So, my feelings on Black Lives Matter is, of course, black lives matter, of course. I mean, what's the, what's, what is there to say other than that? I mean, I know a lot of people say brown lives matter, that's true, of course, brown lives matter.
Yeah.
Blue lives matter, white lives matter, lives matter, okay? I even believe that kids that are not born yet matter, okay? And a lot of people believe that too. Okay, so, yeah, lives matter, okay? Now, the movement and the phrasing of that movement, two things I've observed. Number one, a lot of people have tried to take the movement and take it in a wrong direction, from both sides of the political spectrum, because some people are using it for their ends on one side of the spectrum, and other people on the other side of the spectrum are using it for their ends. I don't think that represents America. I think most of America respects the process by which we want to make sure that policing is better.
Right, well, I mean, I think, I think though...
If that's the question you're asking?
Well, I think more specifically, do you believe there's systematic racism in the justice system itself, and in particular, in Santa Clarita?
No.
No?
No, I've lived here for...
What about...
Wait, let me finish.
Okay.
Because it's not just a no answer, okay?
Okay.
With me, it's never just a no. You know that? No, when you say systematic racism, the systematic part is really, that's really the key to when you say systematic racism. Because if it's systematic, that means that all the system needs to be changed. Well, there was, don't get me wrong, there was systematic racism all across this country, okay? Anyone who knows the history of the country knows that people that were, had darker pigment to their skin, whether they be preferred to be called black or African-American, those people have been discriminated against, because a lot of those people came out of slavery. And all across a huge section of the country, even after slavery ended, through the Jim Crow laws and all the laws that were put into place, you once again had systematic racism. Now, over a period of years, that has changed. And everyone that knows their history... And everyone that knows their history. Oh, yes. Oh, God, yes. You couldn't have a president that was a black man if that hadn't have changed. You, if, I'll tell you, on a perspective, there's a really excellent book, The Warmth of Other Suns. Wilkinson or Wilkerson, I'm trying to remember her, her name, the author. But it's a great book. It's all, which I finished reading recently. It, it's a book about the Great Migration out of the South and why people fleeing from the Jim Crow to other parts of the country. And it also takes a temperature of how people that are black have been treated and how they have fared and how they have overcome so many things and what things are still to be overcome. But yes, during that period of time, that was a huge level of systematic racism. And then there was a less level, as you know, the redlining. You know, the redlining in real estate. Uh, the rules and laws that were written in, that's systematic racism.
Okay.
Okay. So now, when you say systematic, that's just, you just throw that and say it's the same. It is not the same. Now, the question is, is systematic here in Santa Clarita? First of all, let me tell you this, are there racists here in Santa Clarita? You bet there are.
Okay.
Okay? There are everywhere. Okay? There are racists, there are people that hate people for not just color of their skin, but for their religion, for their sexual preference. There are people that hate people. Okay? And you and I both know this to be true.
Sure.
So, but the question is, is that built into the system? Okay?
Well, I.
That I don't believe it is, but you, if you want to give me an example to address here in Santa Clarita, then I'll be happy to do so.
Then let's do that. Uh, there is a, uh, first of all, this is a predominantly white city.
Just, yeah, it, it, it's, it is a predominantly, but the predominance drops every year.
Okay.
You know, we're, we're in.
There was the incident.
Maybe sixty now.
There was the incident with the, the sheriff's department where they were called because some kids were being threatened by, I believe, a homeless person with a knife. The kids were African American. When the police arrived, the sheriffs arrived, they actually went after the African American kids.
All those kids were African American?
I, I don't know the specifics on it. I just know that some of them were African American and that they, they, the sheriffs didn't go after the, the the person with the knife. They went after the kids instead. And it's my understanding they were all African American. However, I could be wrong on that. So, you know, Mark, you know, don't hold me to that. But I mean, there is the concern, I think some people had about that issue, you know, and the way that the sheriff's department treated the kids that, you know, were, you know, things about George Floyd and, and, and other African American people that have been subjected to police brutality or, or racism. You know, I mean, do you think, you don't think that's a situation like that?
Did I think that that was a situation of systematic? Absolutely not.
No. Okay. How so?
Well, because first of all, if you really find out about the incident.
Yeah.
From, from, from what I have heard.
Okay.
Actually, the early reports that went out, that the national media actually grasped upon, is exactly what you said. That that's African Americans. Okay?
Yeah.
My understanding is that that was a couple of teenager African Americans and a white young man that was African American, uh, if you want to make them black and white.
Okay.
But certainly, uh, there was a mix of kids. It was skateboards.
Okay.
Secondly, calls that went to the sheriff's department, different calls came from different people. Okay? So different calls came from different people.
Yeah.
To the sheriff's department. Now, you know, the sheriff's department, when they get a call where there is a dangerous weapon, where there could be a deadly weapon. Okay? They come in and they, they don't hold back. They come in and they usually come in and jump out with their guns drawn. Having had guns drawn on me before, I can tell you that is a standard law procedure. Okay, it's a standard procedure. And if it's, if, if that's the metric by which a person gets to collect money, then I would like to get recompensed for when I was in the air force and I was, you know, eighteen years old. And, uh, I worked in a hospital and I came out of the lab and was standing in the hospital with another young man about the same age with a gun straight in my face, who happened to be an MP. Okay? But they'd gotten a silent alarm that I had nothing about. That will sober you up. Okay?
Sure.
It is not pleasant, but you have to understand that procedures are procedures. So, there was a part of that whole incident that was somewhat disturbing. Okay? And that was that one of the sheriffs apparently went and, and, and grabbed, uh, AR-15 or whatever the long gun that they use is and jumps out of the thing as well to point it over then. That's a kind of probably a little overkill with regarding the fact that not, not in all situations, mind you, because you remember North Hollywood, right?
Yeah.
You remember all how outgunned the, the police were there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, all of those things are built into their procedures. That might have been overreaching. By the way, as you know, the sheriffs are looking very seriously about their policies. They need to fix their policies because overreaction is not good either. Okay? So do I think that they overreacted in that situation? I don't think so. I don't think anyone was injured. I think those, those young men were pulled aside. Yes, they were put in the policing. Yes, they questioned them very much and then they released them. And that was a great resolution. And I hope that, it's too bad that resolution didn't take place all across this country every time the police were involved. And the, on the other side was not a person that was threatening the lives of the police.
When the Black Lives Matter people were protesting and that the social media was saying that, you know, they're going to come in and destroy the city and everything like that. Did you support the city council's decision to, um, bring in the National Guard?
Yes.
Really?
Absolutely.
It was basically a bunch of kids.
Well, basically, I actually saw the streaming. I actually saw the, the protest streaming.
Yeah.
And the agitators in the front and the people that were yelling very, very nasty and angrily and they're. Steven, you and I know what agitation is.
Sure.
Agitation, uh, it, it, it's, it's not there standing with a sign peacefully protesting, which I think most of the people in that crowd were.
Yeah.
But upfront and with bullhorns, there were people that were angrily, angrily protesting. Now, I, no, let me, let me finish. Okay? You asked the question because you, there has to be an understanding. I can just come out and say that.
Yeah.
Okay? Because I know there's a lot of people on their side. So, oh, you overreacted.
Yeah.
About half of the businesses in Old Town New Hall, this is far away from where the protest is supposed to be, although on social media, air quotes. Okay? There was a lot of rumors flying around. As it turns out, eight hundred people show up. So whether that was a concentrated effort, whether it was a result of the rumors, whether that was a, a huge thing that everybody coalesced on it. Okay? Which is the new way to get a protest going.
Right.
Uh, however that happened, eight hundred people show up. The people earlier in the day, business people are like, I better be safe rather than sorry. They see that, they see businesses that are being burned, looted. That, they, they don't, a lot of these small business people, they don't want that. Okay? Because when a business is looted and burned, they, they don't, nobody cares who it is, what color their skin is, they get a, no, it's a business. You're taking away their livelihood. So I'm going to tell you, half the businesses in downtown New Hall, approximately, maybe forty percent were all boarded up. People paid money to come out or they went and bought plywood and they boarded them up. That's how much they were apprehensive. I understand them all. I didn't go see them all. Was also boarded up a great amount of them.
But.
Okay. So here is the key.
Okay.
The key is as a Monday morning quarterback.
Right.
As a person that, when it all is finished.
Yeah.
And it's all over with. And you say, huh, they were just, they were peaceful protesters. Thank God they were. I'm glad it turned out that way. But anytime you get hundreds of angry people, you don't know it's going to turn out that way. And I'm going to tell you, I've been in two riots.
Okay.
Two, real street riots.
Okay.
Not by choice.
Okay.
One time when I was managing property in Venice on the boardwalk.
Yeah.
All of my tenants, different colors, different nationalities. None of them were, no one was happy. They had small businesses, we locked down the building. But it turned bad and there were only a couple of hundred people involved in that to start with. It turned bad fast. Okay? And you know that it's not just for the businesses. It's not just for that. It's for the protesters.
Okay.
Steven, no, no, no. Okay, me. People are getting killed out there. Standard, people that are tangentially innocent people or people that are there to support that you would say, well, they're not innocent because they have a certain background or a certain, or they're there when they shouldn't be there. Look, people, when they go to a protest, I'm sure that the protesters here at Valencia, when the eight hundred people show up down there, they didn't go with that in mind. They are innocent people in that regard. They're just there protesting. You need to protect those people. So do what you need to do.
Okay. So you're talking about safety. You're talking about safety?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Why didn't they call the National Guard for the people that were protesting about COVID being a hoax? That, that we need to reopen businesses and reopen California in general. There were about three hundred to four hundred people there protesting for that. They were hostile. It's, it, it used to appear to me when I drove by them. I mean, why wasn't the, the same standard held to them that was held to the Black Lives Matter people?
I don't know that, Steven, because I was not in the position to make that decision.
Okay.
That's a question you're going to have to ask.
Well, should it, should it have, should they have been held at the same standard then? I mean, should the National Guard been called out?
If, if they determined that they thought that that was going to go south. Because remember, there's been other protests in Santa Clarita, lots of other protests on both sides. Okay? And how many times has it happened? How many times have they called out the National Guard? I don't, I don't remember them bringing out the National Guard. I don't know if they were here.
Right.
At all or had any presence at all, even though the riots were way more serious in Rodney King.
Yeah.
Which was the other riot that I happened to be managing a property in and was leaving quickly to escape because when, listen, when everything starts to break down, when the order starts to break down, that's when people get hurt. That's when people get killed. And I think that it's easy to Monday morning quarterback and it's easy to say, you overreacted. Okay? Default on the overreaction if the end result is that everything is fine. Okay? There's been other protests since then and there were other protests before then. And there was no National Guard then either for Black Lives Matter.
Right.
Okay? So it, it's a matter of degree. It's a matter of the number of people. It's a matter of concern. It was a matter of there were riots taking place, rioting, taking place that day, the day before, that week. There were buildings being burned. There were people that were using, and this, when I talked about other people using, that's not right. But they do it. People that are criminals use anything as a screen to break the law. And that became a perfect opportunity, unfortunately. But that does not reflect the majority of the people that are part of this movement. It simply doesn't.
Is Bob Keller a good councilman? Do you think he's been good?
It depends on what the issue is. Because I agree with Bob on a lot of things over the years.
Yeah.
I disagree with Bob on some things over the years.
Is he a racist?
I don't believe he's a racist.
You don't believe he's a racist, even though based on the statement he made?
Yeah, and I, I know about that statement. Uh, I, I remember I was between council terms when, when that whole thing went down. And, uh, I thought Bob should have done an apology.
Yeah.
Okay. For, he should have apologized for people taking his words out of context.
Yeah.
Okay? But he chose not to.
Yeah.
Okay? Now, how do I say, well, how do you know Bob's a racist or not? Well, let's put it this way. How do you know Steven's not a racist? How do you know Tim Ben's not a racist? How do you know?
Some of my best friends are black people.
I, you know what? That would be, that's, that meme is funny, but not.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, how do you know that for sure? Well, like, oh, how, does anybody know? Are you inside of somebody's head unless they come right out and say it?
Right.
Well, Bob has never come right out and say it. He's never said that out loud. So I judge people by their actions.
Okay, that's going to be my question.
Here's the next thing. Okay. So you have a lot of interactions with people, right?
Yeah.
And having, uh, when you're on the council, you have interaction with their council people. So you form judgments of them.
Right.
Right? And they're not all correct either, because like I said, you don't get to spend tons of time, you certainly don't get to spend tons of time talking business. But I tested, if it were, Bob, a couple of times about, Bob, are you, you know, and I didn't say to him, okay, we're going to take a quiz, Bob. No. I asked him about some issues that took place that were taking place in another city.
Yeah.
And about, uh, there was, uh, specifically some unrest that was taking place. And it was not specifically, uh, what, for people that were black, but actually people that are brown. Okay? And, uh, there was no reaction that you would think of saying, oh yeah, the police did the right thing, this, that, and the other. Actually, in that particular instance, he automatically said, no. Some people, and I'm not going to say what it was or when. That's not appropriate, but he said, no. Policies were not followed and that was not right. And that was as specifically for a group of people that is a minority. Okay? I don't know Bob's heart of hearts.
Yeah.
As a believer of God, I think God knows, but I don't. And I don't think anybody else knows. All I know is I never saw it in, in, I never saw it when I was with him.
Okay, well.
Bob is the man to ask that answer for.
I hope to have him on the show and find out.
Okay. Hey, you can, maybe you can have a wrap up and see how did you do as a councilperson, Bob?
I would like to do that with Bob.
Let me tell you, Bob has done a lot of great things for the city. He really has. Okay? And I found myself on Bob's side a lot of times.
Yeah.
Okay? Uh, but like I said, sometimes I, I found myself on the opposite side of him. And Bob's old, older, older school.
Yeah.
You know, sometimes you make up your mind and, uh, there, it's harder to change it, I think.
Yeah.
So I, I think probably, is this coffee?
It's empty.
I could pretend. Hold on.
Okay. Well, you have water there.
This is great coffee.
Yeah, there you go.
You gotta have some of this coffee. It's the top coffee.
The top of the Santa Clarita coffee.
No, let me, let me finish with Bob. So, like I said, I really spent enough time with Bob that I never saw that. So, and so I have to say, no, I don't think so. Do I think that he should have stood by exactly what he said? No, I don't think he should have stood by that exactly because I don't think that's what he meant. Of course, when you parse the words, okay?
Yeah.
And, and you see the full context of the words. Obviously, he was making an alliteration and, and he was doing, I think, not that well done, in my opinion, from a English standpoint. But from a, hey, I didn't say that? Oh, yeah, I, listen. When you're in politics and people recording everything and at the end of this podcast, absolutely, without a doubt, if I, if people listen to this, and there will be people that are listening because I'm running for office. People are going to dig in here, they're going to take my words out of context, they're going to grab phrases, they're going to throw them up on social media.
I, I think you give way too much credit to this podcast.
You know what? Let me tell you something. The people that are really, uh, the people that are really in tune and smart know that this is a place where Stephen Daniels goes into depth with people, gives them to time. Okay? Hopefully, anybody that listens to your podcast doesn't just listen to two minute and certainly doesn't go on to social media and take a phrase or a sentence out of context. So hopefully they, they spend their time.
Do you, um, what, as far as the city goes and small businesses go, what, what are your thoughts about pot shops? Like, is that, is that, I mean, Kelvin was on recently and he said that it was actually more of an issue with county and the regulations and stuff like that. It's why we don't have pot shops in, in Santa Clarita. Is that the case? Or is it something more? I thought, it was always my understanding at least, that the city council had basically decided they weren't going to allow them in the city.
Yeah, we didn't, we, we didn't think it was good for the.
So the city did decide that?
Well, the city, the city didn't, in general, the city council, they don't think it's a good idea. It's like, you know, there are a lot of people think that, uh, too many liquor stores is not a good idea.
Well, I was.
You understand, like, in, I mean, you have whole coalitions, okay? In areas where they're sometimes the only retail for several blocks, if you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So, and it's liquor stores. And so different populations have determined that that too many liquor stores is not a good idea. Okay, so people believe that. There are liquor stores, okay? But that, but too many, so it's a kind of long of those lines. We all know that pot is legal.
Yeah.
We all know that it's not.
Would you support the idea of pot shops in in Santa Clarita?
No, I don't like the idea.
Why not?
Same reason I don't think there's have so many liquor stores.
Well, I mean, what about a pot shop?
A pot shop?
One pot shop, a monopoly.
Yeah, for medical marijuana.
Yeah, okay.
Because that's where I come down on that issue. I think that it's, it always surprises me in California where people freak out. You cannot smoke tobacco, okay? Which will kill you, a lot of you, if you continue to smoke it, because they did studies for years and years and years, and they haven't studied what that pot smoke does to you.
Well, I'm all for that personally.
But anyway, so that's, like I said, I, I don't know. I think that our society in general spends too much time trying to forget reality. Although sometimes reality is is tough, and I think sometimes we need an escape.
Well, I, but that's.
But still, it's not good for us.
You yourself have pretty much put yourself out there as as an independent, a man of the people. The billboard issue, as we talked about, was something that you knew the people didn't want. Um, what if the people turned around and said, we want a pot shop?
Do a referendum, do a vote. Put it on the ballot.
That's not easy to do.
Oh, it's very easy. The council could do it anytime they want.
Well, okay, but even then, they have to.
No, the council could do it anytime they want.
Okay.
The council does an opinion poll, put it on the ballot.
Okay.
I mean, it's not hard for the council to do that.
Okay.
They just don't do it because they say, well, what they usually say is, well, you know, you pay us to make that decision, and we have a pulse of the community. We know what the community wants.
Do you think they have a pulse of the community?
Oh, sometimes they do, and sometimes they don't, okay? Generally speaking, they have a pulse of the community that's paying attention. Why do I say that? Because they get reelected?
Yeah.
Yeah, because people want to come to Santa Clarita. It's kind of like that old adage about how horrible are some people think this country is. Well, if it's so horrible, how come people are banging on the door to get in, okay? Why do so many people want to move here? Well, people from the outside think, ah, well, it's the same thing with Santa Clarita, okay? We're doing a lot of things correct here.
Right.
And we've done a lot of things correct here.
Right.
So that's not to say there's not problems. Don't get me wrong, okay? Yeah, there's problems. Yes, we need to work on stuff. Yes, we need to be better. But on the flip side, lots of people want to move here. How do we know this? Look at the cost of real estate.
Yeah.
Okay?
Do you think, do you still consider Santa Clarita a small town? Or do you see it as a city?
It's, I wish I could say it was a small town. It's not a small town. It still has a kind of a small town feel.
Yeah.
Okay, why can I say that? Well, because if you want to become involved, like politically, you can. And you can be numbered and your name known, okay? That's why small town.
Okay.
Okay, that small town feel, okay? The other thing that people equate a small town feel with is a couple of reasons. The schools, the churches, mosques, temples, okay? Those things combined give people a feeling of community.
Yeah.
Nonprofit organizations, of which Santa Clarita has a great number per capita. Hopefully, most of us will make it through the pandemic.
Fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed, some will not. Because of those institutions.
Yeah.
Those institutions engender a feeling of community. And if you're connected and plugged into one of those institutions, you feel more like it's a small town.
Yeah, I've always, the thing I always, when people ask me to describe Santa Clarita, I've always described it as a place that used to be a small town that has become in a big city, kicking and screaming as it as it heads that direction.
Well, that's absolutely true.
Yeah.
Because there's nobody, well, there's hardly anybody.
Yeah.
I won't say nobody. There are some people that want to live in the city.
Yeah.
But most of them don't live here because they moved here, and a lot of them moved from the city or a more dense part of a city. So most of the people that talk about kicking and screaming is because they don't want to be part of the big city, because they didn't move here to be part of the big city, okay? They actually want the idea of a small town that we can sit and talk to one another, Stephen, and you can call me on the phone, or you can come to my house. We can have a snow cone together, that we can talk.
I'm not into snow cones.
Well, that, yeah, I don't know. It's just, it is kind of a seditious thing for snow cones.
Yeah.
Ice cream. Are you good with ice cream? Okay, well, yeah, well, there you go. As long as we don't talk about what flavor ice cream or what color, I suppose we're gonna be all right.
I don't see color. Anyway, okay, well, let's, I want to ask you about something that's, an incident. My, my wife is a member of Moms Demand Action.
Yes.
And when you were running for city council last time.
Yes.
You went to a Moms Demand Action meeting. You were the only Republican.
Yes.
That came to that, so kudos to you for doing that. You were kind of attacked a little bit about your perspective on school shootings at that time. If I, correct me if I'm wrong on what you said. But it was something about the fact that we don't, we don't have to worry about school shootings in this area because of the churches and the nonprofits and the support system that we have in this city.
I would have never said, we don't have to worry about school shootings.
Okay, all right. Well, I heard about it secondhand, so I'm asking you to clarify the remarks, because since then, we've had the saga of shooting.
Oh, yeah.
So.
No, I've always felt that it was only a matter of time.
Okay.
That's a, that's a national phenomenon, okay? As far as the school shootings go. So, yes, I, I did go to to that forum, because I try to attend all the forums.
Yeah.
And attacked would be an excellent, I was screamed at, and the moderator did a very poor job with the forum. So I will not be.
What did you say that upset us?
I will not return to the forum, because I really like a controlled discussion. You know what a controlled discussion is? That's where you sit and everybody respectfully listens and tries to answer the other questions.
Right.
Screaming at each other in a park somewhere or screaming in a demonstration. It's just, I, it's just not what I think, I don't think good government happens that way.
Yeah.
And I don't think ideas happen that way.
What did you say, though? I mean.
No, what I was saying at the time, first of all, I will say that when asked kind of like what the forum was and the forum, it was, it was one of those that was set up to, and that I was given an indication it was gonna be kind of like this. And that that they would be talking about guns and and every different aspects of it. But they didn't really kind of talk about what it was. And I don't know if it was because the other candidates had, you know, get better information. I'm not sure. But in any case, it was kind of getting blindsided into being in a position. So when they're asking the questions, any question about gun control, and they're talking about, well, what would make Santa Clarita a better place than another place? Or what could make Santa Clarita have an impact? Or what, and I can't remember the exact question, okay? But it had to do with, you know, what is it that could help? Or why would Santa Clarita be different with regards to trying to avoid shootings? Okay, whether they be school shootings or random shootings or anything else. And I was talking about the same thing we were just talking about before.
Right.
This aspect of community. Because I come from a time, okay, when these things didn't happen, okay? I come from a time and a place where you used to be able to go and have show and tell, and you could take your squirrel hunting rifle with you for show and tell, all right? So how is that different? How did our country get so far off its moral compass? That there, get to the point where anybody gets into the frame of mind, whether they're completely in their frame of mind or somewhat disturbed, and I think you gotta be a little crazy for that to happen.
A little bit.
I don't, yeah. And that was another point I was also trying to make is the mental health issue, okay? How did our country get to the point where you have people that are that sick? That they think it's okay to shoot innocent people, okay? How do you get to the point where you have a big bunch of people, a lot of them hopefully are in jail, where they think it's right to shoot somebody because they want to take something of theirs? I mean, how did we get that far off the moral compass?
Well, let's.
Okay, so for me, that's kind of where I was going with it. I don't know that I said it well at that time, okay? And but that was kind of the the idea of what it was, I was, was the point I was trying to make.
Well, let, okay, so. Since the saga of shooting has happened.
Yeah.
Um, what do you think we could do in this city to prevent something like that from happening now? I mean, from happening again?
Whether it's this city, Stephen, or whether it's any city across America.
Yeah.
Until huge systematic changes are made, I don't think you can avoid it. I don't think in life you can avoid it at all, okay? There's been crazy people through the ages. Lizzie Borden.
Sure.
Took an axe, wasn't a gun, but it was an axe.
Sure.
So, yeah, there's been people. There's, and even, even early on, before it became a thing to do, they become famous or whatever, however in people's heads they think, wherever sickness they get in their head, that becomes so much it says, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be famous in on YouTube for whatever. I don't know. How we got from there? Even back, you know, the shooter in Texas in the early 60s, I believe it was.
Yeah.
That got up in the tower and shot people, and the people just couldn't believe, what is? What is that? Well, that person is sick. So what, what are those changes systemically? Well, I think one of the first things we have to do in our country is that we have to look very seriously. And this, this also plays to homelessness, okay? Which I know that you and I both have a heart for.
Sure.
Okay. There's a lot of people that are homeless that are mentally ill. Many years ago, mentally ill people had two choices. If there wasn't someone that was taking care of them, a family member, that was taking care of that crazy uncle or something like that. And that crazy uncle wasn't a danger to other people, okay? These people were examined by a battery of doctors, and they locked them up and gave them medicine, and if they could stay on their medicine, they released them. But they had to go and get their medicine. Now, if we don't get back to that, I don't think we're ever gonna solve the mental health issue that's the underlying issue that would let crazy, crazy people, sick people, go shoot other people or go and live on the sidewalk in our cities. That has to change. There has to be a change. This country has to come to a reckoning, and this country has freedom. We have freedoms. And as you know, this stems from court actions that said, you must allow a person their freedom unless there is proof that they are gonna harm themselves or harm another person. And I know from managing property on Venice Beach that the definition of that, according to the police, that recall when we have people that were crazy and threatening and screaming and obscenities and crazy, out at people like this and aggressive and stuff, in their head, crazy. But they said until they hurt someone badly. I don't talk about pushing, I'm not talking about hitting somebody. I'm talking about injuring them or having a knife in their hand and threatening to kill people. Now, that, it is critical. That's the critical baseline. That has to be changed. We have to do something about that. We, as a society.
Red flag, red flag laws.
I'm talking about anything we need to do to have people that are crazy examined and locked up if they have to be locked up in in institutions until they can be made better. It can't be different than that. You're not going to fix homelessness unless you have that. You're not gonna fix homelessness.
I feel that you're kind of going off on a tangent.
I'm not going off on a tangent. I'm talking about a root cause all across the country.
I've never known a mass shooter to be homeless, to be honest with you.
No, but have you known a mass shooter that was in their right mind?
No, but you're connecting one to the other.
No, no, I'm not. I'm getting to the root of the problem. I'm getting to the root of the problem is that people that are sick.
Yeah.
These people have mental illnesses.
Yeah.
Okay, that's a person who's an alcoholic. Okay, a person who's alcoholic gets to a certain point when they start injuring themselves or others. That's a sickness. That's rampant among the homeless population. Mental health is where it is, the basis of where it's at. You talk about these unintended consequences of the police. Let's go on another tangent. It's not different. There's a lot of that, okay? You've got crazy people that go into police custody.
Yeah.
The police are not trained, well, let's put it this way. Some of the police are trained to different levels in different departments all across the country.
Okay.
Okay, don't put them all in one basket. Okay, there are some police departments that are better than other police departments. You want to make police departments better, you need to train them, okay? You need to give them the resources, and maybe you need to have somebody that goes out on the place where this is not a robbery in progress, but this is called in as a mental health issue. My brother is off his meds and going crazy. Then maybe they need to have a health professional that goes with them for advice, okay?
Okay.
That's, once again, another tangent. And you've seen that happen recently on national TV, okay? You've seen that happen because people are dying. The root cause, a lot of times, people are dying because they have a mental illness. And then the mental illness becomes too big. There's an incident, people are not trained to handle it, and there you go.
You, correct me if I'm wrong, when the Lemley Theater project was going up, you were against it, correct?
I was not against the project that was on the site of the Lemley Theater.
You were against the subsidy.
The subsidy of the Lemley Theater itself, because I examined it and because I did a cost analysis and tried to figure out whether I used the city documents to find out if you get enough tax money back to pay for it. Okay, so let's, let's divide something here. If there is a critical need in the city of Santa Clarita, let's say we, mental health, okay? And let's say we decide that we're gonna spend money on mental health, a good expenditure of money.
Right.
Okay, so that's different. You have a cost benefit ratio, okay, that you have to figure out. If there was no mental health problems in Santa Clarita, which you're kidding if you don't think that's true. But if you didn't have any, there'd be no cost benefit ratio, that wouldn't be a good expenditure.
Okay.
This is an expenditure of income from entertainment, okay? So you put in the money as a subsidy to help something, be it a restaurant, a brewery, a brew pub, whatever the many things that have been used for redevelopment or cities have used to bring people in because they're gonna get taxes back from that.
Right.
Okay, you're supposed to analyze how much you give them, how much you're gonna get back over a period of time, okay?
Yeah.
When I looked at the study that was done, and they said, here's how it's gonna pay for itself. This several million dollars is gonna be paid for after a period of time because you're gonna get a tax increment, not on movie tickets, they're not taxed. But you're gonna get a tax increment on people that go shopping locally in Old Town New Hall. You're gonna get an tax increment of restaurants, okay? It's a 1% goes to the city of all of your sales tax. It's like, you get a 1%, that's how a big chunk of the city is funded, right? So we love things that have a tax increment. We love tourism, where people bring us dollars from someplace else and put them in here.
So you did not feel that.
So, no, the study said that after a number of years, I think it was 20 or 30, I have to go back and look exactly, but you would eventually get paid that money back.
Okay.
But here's the problem. I asked the consultants that came before me, okay? Now, we know that the tax increment is going to generate money. And I accept those figures because they're true. It will generate money. See, if you go out to dinner anywhere, it's gonna, they're gonna, a percentage of that's gonna go to local jurisdiction.
Right, okay.
So I asked them, how many people are gonna go to the Lemley Theater from outside the city of Santa Clarita that wouldn't have gone to another theater that's already inside of Santa Clarita?
Right, right.
That's the only question, okay? That's the question that counts about how much taxes you're gonna get in, new taxes. And they said, we never studied that. We can't say that, okay, for certainty, because no one asked us to do that. Well, I did my own study, as you can imagine.
Yeah.
And in retail, they have what's called the concentric rings. There's a, and it's, it's how far people can come to go to get something, okay? Okay, so here's your five mile ring, there's your 10 mile ring, there's your 25 mile, there's your 50 mile, okay? So if it's Disneyland, people that come from all over the world go to Disneyland.
Right.
That's a big ring, okay? If it's a great restaurant here in Old Town New Hall.
Right, sure, sure.
If, if you're going to the Junction, El Trocadero or something like that, that's a much smaller ring, okay? So the question is, how long does it take? The barrier, there's a huge barrier in travel time when you get to 20, 30 minutes.
Sure.
Okay?
Yeah.
Two, two people going. So if you have a movie that's playing, okay? And it's playing over in Valencia, where we have theaters, Canyon County has theaters, And it's playing over in Valencia where we have theaters, Canyon County has theaters, and it's playing in New Hall. Okay? Yeah, if you're close, you're going to go to New Hall. But if you want to see that movie and there is no theater in New Hall, you're going to Valencia. So, and you're going to go to dinner, maybe you go to dinner here and go there first, or maybe you just have dinner over in Valencia. As long as you have dinner in the city, it's not new tax money. So, Stephen,
Yeah.
that's the reason
Okay.
why I was opposed because I don't believe we're going to ever, it might be 50, 100 years before we ever get that increment back.
That was the longest answer I wanted. That was just an introduction to the follow-up question.
Oh, no! Oh, man!
Question is, if you, based on that,
Yeah.
would you, with the COVID situation right now, would you support the idea of subsidies to small businesses, local businesses in general? And if so, what do you categorize as a small business in this area?
Well, that question you just asked
Yeah.
would require a lot of study. The question I just answered for you
Yeah.
probably was, I'm thinking 60 hours.
But in principle.
No, no, I'm serious. I'm serious. It's, so, in principle, in principle, yes.
Okay.
That's a possibility, okay? But in actual study, there's no way I could give you a threshold of how big the business is right now.
Right.
Or how much you could, you would spend.
But, okay, so in principle, you support the idea of subsidies?
In principle, there are subsidies always.
Okay.
If it generates income. In other words, and here's the good thing-
It has to generate income?
Oh, yeah, it needs to generate income. Because it's a gift of public funds otherwise. It's not only illegal, a gift of public funds.
No, but I mean, look, the argument about the Lemley is that it would bring a certain type of art, you know, as far as independent film goes, that does not exist in the city. Uh, when you talk about, I'm just single something out like Brave New World, which is a, to my knowledge, the only real comic book store in this town. Art form it is, some may argue against that, but, uh, you know, let's single that out, like, would Brave New World be something that, you know, because, just because it offers something that's unique for the city, or the ice rink is another example. Uh, when it, you know, even though they ended up purchasing it, but what, I mean, is that something that, can, the merits of what it brings, can that be more important than the revenue that it brings back?
That
Yeah.
is a very dangerous road to go down with regard to picking and choosing. And yes, the city picks and chooses.
But I mean-
Okay, they, the city, we're sitting in a park right now, beautiful park, okay? It was actually built a long time ago before there was a city.
Yeah.
But I remember coming here as a kid, this park, it doesn't make a profit.
Yeah.
But the city decided that this amenity was healthy. That it would be a great place for kids to play,
Yeah.
families to picnic, et cetera. So, they did a benefit announce a long time ago, decided parks were good. And so they built this one and they maintain it. The city maintains it every week. Beautiful park, okay? Now you're talking about niche businesses
Yeah.
and niche needs across the spectrum. Okay? So, you have picked out a favorite. And I like Brave New World. I think they're a great comic shop.
Yeah.
Okay? My daughter is very much in animation and that sort of thing, so they've done some great events. Okay, over the years, we even participated in a couple of their zombie things that they were part of. Yeah. It is a terrific business, okay? But you pick out that and say, and I say, "Oh yeah, we need to save Brave New World." But we also need to save Montezia, apparently. Probably Montezia over the years had a lot more participation than that, right?
Well, but I, I'm saying, I'm not saying save the business.
Well, no, no, but-
A certain amount of subsidies to at least give them the opportunity to survive.
Okay, so now there's a different question.
Okay.
And that's the key. And I didn't mean to have that long answer before I'm Lemley, but it's the same answer.
Okay.
Because you have to take the business, you have to take what it is that they're offering and bringing to the people, and you have to say, "Is this worth saving?" Okay? How much will it, not just is it worth saving?
Yeah.
All the businesses are worth saving, all of them.
Okay.
Because the small business people- All the pop shops in Santa Clarita are worth saving. I'm going to tell you right now-
Good answer.
Alright, so, you need to, you see, say, "Okay, look at the business."
Yeah.
And then you have to analyze it and you have to see what does it cost to save that business? Because I'm going to tell you something, it's breaking my heart. And not just because, even though we're a nonprofit organization, the Canyon Theater Guild.
Yeah.
Okay? It's run like a small business. You have to run it like a small business because if you don't bring enough revenue in.
Yeah.
And most of our revenue is earned. You know, like I said, 90% of our revenue is gone. We don't, we don't get government subsidies of our operating budget, never more than 3% a year. Okay? So, the operating budget, 3% to 4% maximum, and then donations and stuff like this, just regular donations and stuff. These don't run in to those numbers of 20, 30%, no. It's mostly people buying tickets.
Yeah.
Okay? So, it's like a small business. It breaks my heart to see these businesses that are closed, the little ones, that might not be able to reopen.
Right.
And it's going to be a wave and a disaster later.
Yeah.
When all those things are put into place, hopefully, carefully, the city council can look at ways that we can help the businesses, not just on a case by case basis, but carefully to maybe have a couple of people that are tasked, people that are tasked employees of the city that are business minded people that really know what they're doing. Okay? With business, had business, been in business. Then to be able to interact as ombudsmen with the businesses as we reopen up and as these businesses that, some of them are not having to pay rent.
Yeah.
That they have to pay rent. Because that rent payback period and that amount of period, you're going to see some businesses that open. If they're under any sort of a rent abatement where they don't have to pay rent, they're going to be open until the rent has to be paid. And then they'll have to close. Because they don't have the revenues
Right.
necessarily to do that. As far as the payment plan, and that's of course how the state is trying to structure these things, as far as people's rent for, you know, people that are having a rent abatement for apartment livings.
Yeah.
Those people, they're trying to do that as well. But you have to understand that eventually, you can't live somewhere and not pay for it. I mean, that, the whole of capitalism is built on the fact that goods and services are paid for and that we work to get the revenues for goods and services. So,
We could get into-
We could get into that because then we could start talking about socialism and, oh, come on, we just got started. We've only been having-
Actually, I swear to God, I could ask you a thousand more questions, but I've got a couple more quick ones I want to ask you.
And I'm going to answer them as quickly as is expedient.
Well, these are more fun questions.
Okay, that's good. These are hard questions you have this morning.
You think so?
They're good questions.
Yes. Okay, we do a question for my kid Ryan now. And his question to you is-
How old is Ryan?
He is nine.
Nine? Okay.
I had to pause for a second. I'm embarrassed.
No, it's okay.
Alright, his question is this.
Hey, Tim Ben, my dad says you don't get along with some people. Does that bother you?
Ryan? In case you're watching, Ryan?
He'll be watching.
You know what? Sometimes it bothers me a lot. And sometimes it doesn't bother me as much. I would prefer to get along with everyone. Or what people think is get along with everyone. But you know, in real life, people have differences because people are different. And people have different thoughts because people are different. And thankfully, we live in America. And in America, it's based on your freedom to be able to say and think whatever you want. And that will make you different because you're different than the other person in the world. So, yes, we work to get along with each other. And sometimes we work as a team to get something accomplished. But sometimes people say, "You're not getting along with people just because you think something should be different or something should be changed or something should be made better." Don't ever, ever stop trying to change something and make it better just because people say, "Hey, you're not one of us. You're not getting along." No. You be your own person and make it better. And yes, you work with people. You have to work with people to make a change. And hopefully, that's what I'm going to do for the city council. Hopefully, your dad and everyone that's there will vote for me so I can do that.
That was an excellent answer. And I like how you turned to the camera to actually address it to Ryan as well. Alive or dead, who would you want to have dinner with?
Martin Luther King, I think.
That's a good answer. Good answer. Star Trek or Star Wars? I asked you this before, I think.
Star Wars.
Star Wars, okay. And just real quickly, just so I can get you on the record, do you support districting, correct?
Yes, I support districting.
What about term limits?
Yes, I support term limits.
How long is, too long a term? How long should a person serve?
I think that, I think that if they institute term limits so that everybody knows going in, then I think it should be eight years. I think you should serve for eight years.
Sit out and then you could run again in four years?
Something like that. I don't think it should be forbidden forever. I didn't give them that much thought, but I definitely think that you should serve for eight years and have to step down. I think that the presidency is a good thing.
Yeah.
Okay, and anybody who's of one party when the other party is in, if you're very much a party person,
Yeah.
they would shake their head very big, "Yes, that's a good idea." Those who are in and they think they have the greatest president that ever lived, they wouldn't be so keen. They'd be thinking, "Gosh, I sure wish we could have three terms, but I think eight years is enough."
The, I want to ask if, first off, what is your favorite movie?
That's a hard one. There are so many good movies. I think it's A Wonderful Life.
Okay, alright. Interesting that you picked that film because it is about really more than anything else that you can find everything you need in your own small town. You know?
Yeah, and it's also about how hard it is sometimes.
Yeah.
It's so hard to keep perspective. It's so hard to keep perspective of what's important. I mean, and that movie is a long slog. Okay? When people first start watching that movie, I'm not sure why a lot of people would finish it. But if you go through that movie from the beginning to the end, it is just filled with a lot of important messages and a lot of important things and it's, it's so well crafted and it deals with mankind on a level that's inside of them. Spiritually.
Yeah.
Okay? Their family outside them, their community, the country and the world in a timeframe and a time work. And a lot of great artistic projects, the ones that I enjoy. Those stories, I really love those. Fiddler on the Roof, you know, Sound of Music.
Sure.
Things like that. Those stories that put it in a real framework, a real time, real challenges. But yeah, and it's about, it's about change. It's about a person changing and about a person that sees what's really important. And I think that's so important for us to step back. We get wound up. We get passionate, we get angry. Because we're humans.
Yeah.
And we're not perfect. And some of those things, they're built into us. We're supposed to be passionate. But sometimes we have to take a step back, take a deep breath and realize we're all human beings. We cut ourselves and the blood runs out the same color.
The, you consider yourself an actor still, don't you?
Uh, yes, I do consider that I'm an actor. But I, when I'm actor or in acting, I'm trying to do that on the stage.
Yeah.
I think that maybe you could say-
This is the stage right now, Tim Ben.
This is a communication, a place for communication. So, if you talk about communicate, I accept that.
Well, I was going to ask for your best Bob Keller impersonation.
Oh, Bob, oh, sweet Lord. No, I couldn't do that. I can't do Bob Keller. I can't do it. I can't do it, no. Sweet Lord, don't ask me to do that because I can't do Bob Keller. But if I worked on him, I might be able to do him.
Okay.
But, and as a respect, if Bob says it's okay for me to do him after he has completed his term as city councilman and he says it's okay, I'll work it up.
Okay.
And then I'll give it to you then.
What is the monologue? You don't have to do it. I won't put you that much on the spot, but you have to know a monologue right now. What is the monologue that you know?
Actually, I don't know a monologue right now.
Really?
Yeah, no, I don't.
I thought you were about to go into your Shylock though, about the whole pricking.
Yeah, no, 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 no. You know what? I find that you have a thousand slots in your brain, they say.
Yeah.
And you fill them all up and then something falls out the other end. That's the way it is for me. So, right now, I'm working very hard on a whole bunch of different things, but one of them is not a show and one of us not to be an actor. When you have the monologue in your head to be an actor and you go out on call,
Yeah.
then you have your monologue, you have your dramatic monologue, you have your comedy monologue. You need to have them, need to be able to do them. Okay? No. It's been a long number of years since I was that.
Yeah.
When I'm an actor, it's an actor on our stage, when a director calls it in as a favor usually and say, "Come read for this" or whatever. And it's time consuming. Yeah, it's like anything else, to be good at it, to do a good job, it takes a lot, a lot of time. So, no, I wish I could do a monologue for you, but I cannot.
I always try Lady Macbeth, but it never seems to work for me, so. How about an evil villain laugh then?
I can't do that. Although I suppose some of my laughter people are like, "Oh, that's evil."
And last- There you go. That's beautiful.
Alright, I bet.
Now, the last thing we're going to do is just give me your elevator pitch for why somebody should vote for you. One minute, you have one minute, and then I want a joke.
I think people should vote for me because I think our city is in a really tumultuous time.
Yeah.
I think most people moved here because they wanted to live in a place that was safe and clean and a great place to raise a family, a community. I think Santa Clarita is that. I've been part of that for six years of my life. I want to come back and make sure that that continues to be so. I also want to make sure that people that feel like they're disenfranchised or people that don't feel included will know that I will stand up for them. I will stand up to be their voice. That I am a person that believes that every person is valued, important, their background, their diversity. What should matter is that they are human beings and that they live in Santa Clarita. And it's my job to represent each and every one of them. Now, I'm not a perfect person. But I'm going to be your councilperson. So, it is a sacred trust when somebody gives you your vote.
Yeah.
It is a sacred trust. And I'm not saying that just politician wise. I mean, somebody said, "You're going to do a job. We think you're going to do the best job."
Yeah.
I never take that for advantage and I ask people to do that. You can get a sense of who I am or what the problems are if we didn't cover them. You can go to timbenboyton.com.
I think we've covered almost everything.
But I will have to say, if you listen to this podcast with Stephen today, I think you'll get a really good sense of who I am if you want that kind of depth, but please listen all the way through.
Okay, there we go. Now, how about a joke real fast?
So, a priest, a rabbi and a minister walk into a bar. Going to do really good business. Especially now.
Alright, Tim Ben, thank you for taking the time. It's been always an informative conversation with you and I wish you much luck in the election. And hopefully we'll have you back on again sometime in the near future.
Stephen, thank you for doing it. Thank you for coming back to the podcast. I took a little break. I believe that what you do is important. I think the depth that you're able to give it is also important. I hope people out there are listening to the podcast if they're looking for in-depth stuff.[1680.12] stuff, okay? I encourage everyone to listen to your podcast because it's going to give real depth to the candidates and also I want people to really dig in because every election is important. But right now in Santa Clarita, with all that's going on, this is real important.
Absolutely. All right, guys.
God bless all of you.
All right, we hope you enjoyed the talk.
You've been listening to The Talk of Santa Clarita. Listen to us on iTunes, SoundCloud.com, YouTube and Stitcher. Barring a life event getting in the way, a new podcast is available every Tuesday. Questions, comments and show ideas can be sent to thetalkofsantacarita@gmail.com. You can also call or text us at 661-505-8672. That's 661-505-8672. Follow us on Twitter at thetalkofsc or on Facebook, Instagram and YouTube at the Talk of Santa Clarita. You can also visit our website by going to www.thetalkofsantacarita.com. This has been a production of Radio Free Santa Clarita Incorporated, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. To donate, go to radiofreesantacarita.org/donate. Radio Free Santa Clarita, on the net and on the air, and we're very much aware.